Hey, nice joke.
You know I'm jumping, I can jump so high?
Yeah.
Because I'm svelte. Are we doing another late weight loss program?
We are.
Okay, good.
I'm beating your ass on it.
More importantly, these two ladies right here have dragged their butts down to the boardroom again for another Off the Trip video show.
What, what number?
I don't know.
Seven?
A hundred and a lot.
Seven forty?
Almost seven fifty, a lot. This fine young lady right here, she's got to start with that, right?
Yeah, a hundred percent.
She's never had somebody who's been from the White House to the boardroom. Or, who? Oh, Jimmy.
Jimmy Fennel.
By the way, by the way, by the way, April 2nd, Jimmy will be back here in the boardroom.
Okay, well, but before you introduce him.
Shebra Calentari Johnson.
Nailed it!
Okay, Monday, returned from Washington, D.C., which she was invited to go to the White House, we're gonna find out why. And the lovely Martine Watkins is here tonight.
Wow.
And we're drinking, we're drinking a, uh, what are we drinking?
You bought it, it's a beautiful red wine.
It's not, it's Pinot Noir.
It's kind of an eighties plastic cup, which is exactly how it should be drunk.
Here's what I want to know, okay? You guys can split this up, five and five. Top ten things that you guys got done since you, since, uh, council members came back into office. Top ten things, five and five, maybe, maybe top eight, can you come up with ten things?
Sure.
In January?
When? Let's go back to December.
Okay, now we're getting into...
How about from the election, November 28th? Top ten things that you guys have...
Since November 28th.
That you've set forward in motion and it's looking good. Or, set forward in motion and you're having a hard time with it. Top ten things that you guys are working on, how does that sound?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we have a new system in place, right? We have now a directly elected mayor, who is gonna be there for four years.
Right.
So, and then the...
Directly, directly what?
Elected.
Directly elected, okay, by the town.
By the entire, by the entire community.
Can I just jump in real quick? Because normally, it was shared amongst the council members who would be mayor.
Yeah.
This is the first election ever.
Right.
Well, not ever, but in a long time.
Yeah, ever.
Since we have...
A directly elected mayor.
Wow, it's always been a council member?
It's always been by rotation and by tradition. So, it's been top vote getter, second top vote getter.
So, you guys voted to get rid of that?
The, the community voted to get rid of it. And they want, I think, continuity of vision and leadership and...
If you're mayor for one year, what can you get done?
Well, we got some stuff, I got some stuff done. I mean, I don't know, it's quite a good thing. She was an exceptional mayor, so...
You were a good mayor.
Yeah, she really was. Thank you, I feel good about what we got done, but nonetheless, it was a hard year. And there's just, you're learning the job, and then you're trying to do something, and then the job's over, and then the next person comes in.
Is there a relief as being on the council to not have to like, think about being mayor? Does it, is it, like, to concentrate on being a council member?
Well, there's clarity, I'd say. I agree, I think we, when we, when I, when we originally ran, it was at large, so when we ran, we ran to get the election of the entire city, right? So, that's a sixty-five thousand dollars, sixty-five thousand person election versus a small district election, right?
Six, seven thousand.
Six, seven thousand, so that's, it's a different mindset, I think what you'll see moving forward as it transitions over time is more individuals who come from a, like a, a district mindset, right? And then you have the mayor who's holding kind of the vision for the entire...
Because you got that done, what else you got going on?
Right, so, that was in November, I'm trying to think, I'm just trying to think of the time.
Well, I'll, I'll go backwards from recently.
Yeah.
We approved the project that's been in the works for years and years and years, that our team did so much work on. It's a library, affordable housing, childcare, community-centered project, that was a big deal. Hundred twenty-four units of affordable housing.
Yeah.
Uh, brand-new, 21st century library.
But it's where the old library was.
No, 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 it's where...
Where the, where the, um...
Farmers market.
Farmers market, yeah. Another big monstrosity is gonna be going up.
It's not gonna be a monstrosity, it's gonna be beautiful.
Is it?
Yes, it will. Roof garden...
Do you consider the other one a monstrosity?
What other one?
The one that's down the street there, by the, by the Kaiser Permanente building, that cruise ship that's standing in the middle of the road.
They're building it, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's big, it's gonna look better once it's built.
Don't you think, don't you, just, when you drive downtown, the...
Who's buying this guy?
You know what some people call it, actually? The Death Star.
The Death Star, see? The Death Star!
Well, wait till it's done.
And if you drive downtown, you're like, what the hell? I used to drive down to my little Santa, my little village of Santa Cruz, like, holy shit.
Where do you have people to live in?
They parked a Titanic in the middle of it.
Where do you want people to live?
I do admit, you can see it before you get to downtown, ladies, I just want to say, doesn't the state of California determine how many houses we have to build in Santa Cruz?
We had a general plan, so this is the complexity of, like, local government, so we have a general plan that outlines our, it had a whole community process that outlines our zoning and our regulations and how much you can build. And we had discretion, when I first got on the council, you had discretion around, you know, height, how you want it, community input, not adequate, you could weigh in that way.
Right.
Since then, the state has created so many different legislation and laws that now makes it so that basically they circumvent local decisions and supersede that based on what's on the books.
Partly because so many communities have not...
This is true.
Built enough housing, not just Santa Cruz, but throughout the state.
And the state actually is suing some cities for not building the housing that has been determined needed.
The only room we have, as you talked about before, is going up in, in height, right?
You've got to have them up.
We can be reasonable about it, we don't need to go way up.
No.
We just need to go enough up that provides housing for everyone, and, and we have now developed some standards that we want our folks who are coming in to build housing to abide by, so...
So, basically, we ran out of room like, ten years ago, now we got, now, right, we ran out of room.
Probably even longer.
A little longer? And then now we're gonna go, what, now we're gonna go, affordable housing? Who, who, how is it determined who gets affordable house? Eight, who, who determines who gets a spot there? A two-bedroom?
Yeah, housing authority, generally, I mean, it's...
I mean, how many people, there's gonna be thousands of people in line for the, like, two-bedroom?
Affordable housing is twenty percent below market rate, I believe. And, uh, not necessarily in Santa Cruz affordable, but a little cheaper, is kind of the goal. And maybe you could work in service, or do something that you could still stay in our community.
Yeah, and that's a really good point, because there's different levels of affordable housing, where there's very low income, there's low income, and then there's the, the missing middle that they call, that aren't eligible for low-income housing.
Some, they're in the gray area.
Those are our teachers.
Those are a lot of people.
Our, you can't, you're just not poor enough, but you have to be dirt poor, basically, to qualify.
Yeah, that's what it is. So, I think that's what's important to keep in mind, is that we need the whole spectrum, we need all the options.
And that makes total sense, you know, it's funny, because the, uh...
Can I approach that thing?
FEMA came in...
No, no, touch that, come forward to the microphone.
FEMA came in to capitol after the storms, and I didn't qualify, because I'm not the bottom of the barrel, you know, so... Now, going my side, if you built that building in a lighthouse field, that's a whole different thing. Like, if we're gonna have to have the state requiring us to build more housing, let's build it where it's needed, not where it's not, I guess.
And the community spoke on that, really, I mean, we were, when I was first on the council, we were part of this listening tour around, if you had to see density, where would you want to see it? Not on the outskirts of the downtown, it's the downtown town. I mean, so, I think, in terms of what they'd like to see in their neighborhoods, it's more ADUs and other neighborhood compatible development, right? But if you're gonna see downtown development, you want it to be dense, and the reason also is, you want it to be environmentally sustainable, which means that you have people out of their cars, using public transit, walking to the farmer's market, walking to the store, taking the bus, ideally. I mean, if you're ideally generating what you're gonna talk about as like, a sustainable community, that's what it consists of. Certainly, we will have bigger buildings coming in that we can use, so, I mean, I, I know Santa Cruz, it feels different, right?
It does feel, it does feel different, it's like...
So, how do we balance it?
It's like, felt like Manhattan yesterday, I'm driving by this thing, like...
It feels different, I know, it feels really different.
I feel like these new places are for like, a young, educated couple, who's trying to get a foothold in Santa Cruz, where do you start?
That's right. Or even our kids.
Exactly, well, and unfortunately, my children couldn't afford Santa Cruz.
That's right.
And they left and went to places that were more affordable. So, it's, we need a starting point for people who love our community, and want to be a part of it, but need a stepping stone.
Well, I mean, if you think about the mobility of a lifespan, you think like, okay, you're in high school, and you're with your parents, and maybe you stick around, you go to Korea, and then you go to a university, and then you come back, or you're at the UC, and you want to like, have an apartment with a friend. Instead, they're usually taking up our, like, single-family houses, which is gonna displace all of the homes, the kids, the parents, you know what I mean? That's what we have in the workforce, that is like, teachers and like, our declining enrollment, right? So, if you're ultimately ideally trying to design housing for a spectrum of people's lifespan, then that's what you're thinking of, right? You're thinking of your mobility in life, you have a time in your life where you need a bigger home, and there's a lot of individuals who live in single-family homes that are really big, and, so we also need to think about, you know, how we're thinking of our elder community and the folks that are aging in our community. It's just a spectrum, it's a spectrum.
And that's a big part, I mean, I, I, my children moved out, I have three, two empty rooms in my house, and that's growing all the time. I feel like, it's really important for, uh, the kids, high school sweethearts, who are raised in this town. A lot of people meet their significant other in high school, and they can't stay.
Yeah.
And that's, I feel like downtown, what we're doing can help them...
That building, you know, those buildings like that don't address the homeless problem, do they? They, they don't impact homelessness in any way, do they?
A portion.
A portion?
Yeah.
How many, portion being...
Well, I mean, I can't give you a number, but there is a spectrum of homelessness, and what it looks like, and what the causes and the root causes are, and some of, some folks, it's because they're working two, three jobs, and they still can't pay, they can't afford to pay rent. So, it's gonna help those folks, one hundred percent.
And the childcare facility downtown will be really great.
I was gonna say, Neil, we have a whole bunch of new viewers, maybe do another interview, yeah, try that one more.
Me?
I'm gonna test to see if you hear my name again.
I did screw her name up.
No, you did, you did.
I mean, that's right. Okay, tonight, ladies and gentlemen, on the Off the Trip video show, I'll screw your name up. The cameraman tonight is the very svelte Mr. Terry Campion.
Thank you so much.
And his guest, his guest host is, uh, the, the, getting svelte. Me. It's show number seven hundred and forty-eight, with Santa Cruz City Council members, drumroll please, Shebra Calentari Johnson.
Ah, he got it!
Nailed it, yeah.
I was up all night going, Shebra Calentari Johnson, Shebra Calentari Johnson, so, and Martine Watkins.
Yes, Martine Watkins, ex-mayor, councilwoman.
Who have done a lot of, have two beautiful women who've done a lot of work here in the community, and each day they do, just, they push on, they press on, even though, I, if I was in that job, I'd just feel like I'd be inundated with so many issues and problems, I'm just gonna end up falling on my backside. It doesn't, I don't know how you can even address everything and move forward with everything.
Well, Kim, I have a question for you.
Here we go.
Your family, I'm sure, is so tight.
We're pretty tight.
When you were like, my last name's gonna be Johnson.
Oh, that's actually a funny story.
Oh, I haven't heard this one, I don't think.
Okay, so, I'll try to give the short version, so I was adamant, I was gonna be Shebra Calentari.
Mm-hmm, forever.
Yeah, women in Iran keep their maiden names, it's their father's last name, but they keep their maiden names, so I was like, feminist, like, I'm keeping my last name, I am not gonna become Shebra Johnson.
Stubborn, you're stubborn.
Yeah, no way, and Brian, my husband Brian was like, okay, whatever, he couldn't care less, and then I had a moment, we had our two kids, and we were dancing in the kitchen, there was a line of Ava Brothers songs, and it's like, the only thing that matters, something, the only thing that matters is the love that has you share your name. And I started crying, I think I was like, maybe postpartum, and, so I'm like, I'm, I'm changing my last name, you're gonna do this?
Do you regret, do you regret?
So then, the story's not over, so then I call my dad, he's very traditional, I'm like, Baba, I'm gonna change my name, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hyphenate, I like, you know, I like, delivered it softly, he's like, great, I was wondering why you hadn't? And then, ten minutes, ten minutes later, my mom called me, she's like, you're doing what? Her last name's not even Calentari, but she was really upset.
She was?
Well, she got over it.
Yeah, she's over it.
What's amazing is, I wouldn't think, I would think the opposite.
I know, that's why I'm...
I would take the model to be so good. Yeah.
What's the worst someone's butchered your name in? Was it me?
Not even calamari, Chevrolet, no, you weren't, you're not even close to butchering my name.
Chevrolet?
Oh, yeah.
So, I'm gonna talk about Midtown, because they asked me to talk about Midtown, I'm talking about New Towns, owned by ninety percent of Midtown Santa Cruz, which we, we, the city of Santa Cruz is trying to help out with those shows, right? So, ninety percent of businesses are owned by women, and they're scared, they're scared of all the homeless people, they're now lying on the, on the front, on their front porch, on their, under their, under their archway of their business.
Yeah.
It's getting, and then, she goes, Neil, it's getting worse, and it's getting worse, and it's getting worse.
We've been, we've been in touch with, uh, business owners in Midtown, and meeting with them, and talking to them regularly, so, where do I start? Okay, so what, what we see, what these businesses experience, and a lot of downtown businesses experience in, in the street homelessness, is, is severe mental illness and substance abuse, that's, that's not, their needs are not met, um, most often. Now, we were talking about this earlier, there's also crime, and we're not as responsive as we need to be to the crime.
Because they don't have enough people, they don't have enough police officers. You know, I mean, shit, Capitol's offering twenty-five thousand bucks to go eat and talk to the people, you know, sign up.
We have incentives as well, I mean, you know, yeah. I think also, I will say, just because I came from a public safety committee meeting, right before this meeting, is, there's, you know...
Now, hold on, this is a meeting, C.C.
We're having a meeting.
A meeting!
We're having a board meeting.
I love it, yeah.
This meeting, yeah.
Big meeting.
Big meeting happening right now. But the, the meeting before the meeting was about this topic, and, and a community that, I mean, in like, a pocket neighborhood, that there was a significant amount of women that didn't feel safe. And, and so, what can we do? Is it environmental design, is it more lighting, is it data and tracking, is it more patrol, like, how are we looking at the things that we can control to ensure that these women feel supported and safe? And their businesses, you know, I mean, that's a huge risk to open a business, you know?
Can I interject with that?
Please.
Because I actually was thinking, uh, my wife and I were thinking about opening a store downtown, and, well, why we didn't was because I told my wife, I did not want her walking into her car after we locked the store up.
We talked to Andy Mills about that.
Yeah, and that's, and that's, and it's, I mean, I love my wife more than anything in the world, I would never want her to have to walk to her car and not feel safe. And I think every community in America feels that way right now, honestly, it's not just a Santa Cruz problem, it's a life problem now, of, of, of safety and, uh, security, so it's, it's a question, I'm, I'm not, that's not a question, that's a statement.
Yeah, yeah.
Of how we, how we deal with it will be forthcoming.
And how we listen to that is also our job, right? And that's what we were talking about in our meeting, is just hearing that these women don't feel safe, and now we're gonna change things to their environmental design, you know, I mean, you wanna, that's our job, how do we do our best within really challenging circumstances to address their needs? And make them feel safe, I mean...
It's tough, and I think the consequences of actions is a big problem in society these days, we talked about a little bit earlier, of like, if you, uh, I always say, if you do the crime, you do the time, and we've, I've lost a little bit of that on the last coach.
There's been so many changes to the criminal justice processes, that, again, the state really coming in. Uh, well-intended policies that have had really negative impacts at the local level.
Taking a break from that conversation, we're gonna time off that conversation, because where is...
It's getting too heavy?
We're gonna talk about the White House, okay?
Yes!
Because, I mean, did you...
Can I do a little bit on the phone?
Sharing air, inviting it, chilling it.
When you gone, you had an amazing trip, you had an amazing trip, you went to the White House.
Tell us about it.
So, when you, hang on a second.
Come back to me in a minute.
Hold it, hold it. You're fired, you gotta get a boat.
Martine, take over. So, when you on the, when, did you find first class, business class?
Oh, no.
Back of the bus?
Back of the bus, for sure.
So, we're on the back of the bus?
Almost by the bathroom.
Did you think about, did you think about when you're on the way back, you're like, God, this plane ride, dragging out, did you think about how low it's gonna go from when you're at the White House to the boardroom on the Off the Trip video show?
Oh, I'm pretty high right now in the boardroom.
Was it like, oh my God, I gotta go home?
This is the highlight of the week.
Come on.
Second to the, second to the visit to the White House.
So, tell us about, tell us about, it's a big deal, so we're making fun of it, I know, but, how'd that come about? Because I'm very proud of you for that.
Thank you.
You got invited, how, why, what the heck were you doing then?
So, um, I'm not one hundred percent sure why I got invited, but I got an email from the White House that said, Mr. President and Dr. Jill Biden would like to have you at their Noorouz reception, Noorouz is Persian New Year.
But I will just interject, if I may, because you have been a very incredible vocal person in our community that has set the stage for a lot of other communities, so I know why, but you can...
I did find out on the trip.
You must have thought that email was like a scam, like...
I thought it was a scam, I had, I had the city check it out and make sure it was real. I did find out on the trip that the city of Santa Cruz, with the support of my colleagues, we were one of the, I think we were the first, but I have to like, you know, check that data, at least one of the first cities in the entire country to pass a resolution in support of the women in Iran, and the uprising in Iran, and against the brutal regime.
Right.
So, we were one of the first in the country, so that's pretty cool.
Do you remember the happening? Do you remember that?
That was September of twenty twenty-two.
How proud did you feel that, that moment?
Oh, I was, I was proud of our community, I was proud of our city council for being vocal and for speaking up, and, and, I've said this before, but when we, we speak up, people in Iran are hearing, and it, and it strengthens their resolve to continue the fight. So, it's really, it's really meaningful.
It doesn't fall upon deaf ears then?
No.
I feel like it's changing in Iran, there's like, the...
It's big.
The uprising, okay, first off, women are the boss, I will say that.
Okay, yeah, I agree.
Yes, they're...
I won't argue with that.
Yeah, you are the boss, they have to be taking notice there.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's good, the change is inevitable of these, I'll just say douchebags who think they run the country.
What happened in the World Cup? In the World Cup, didn't, didn't Iran, didn't the Iran team not sing the national anthem? What was it during the, there was a big deal during the World Cup?
You know what, actually, I should know this and I'd...
I think it was the Iran soccer team, they didn't kneel, they didn't, oh, they didn't sing the national anthem at a protest.
Yeah.
And then I think other, and other, and other teams that were there, supported what they were doing.
Right, they had to be very careful, because they, their families were threatened if they did anything visible at the World Cup, so they had to be very, very careful.
And they did, because that's, that's a big spotlight, it's a huge spotlight.
During your trip to the White House, did you find a new best friend?
I found many best friends.
Were there somebody, so it's...
That's what was really cool.
Tell us a story about somebody that you met.
So, um, well, first of all, I met this Iranian-American woman who was a speaker, and she works with NASA, and she was selected to go on space flights, and she may be the first woman to go on the moon, and eventually to Mars, and so that was, she's not my new best friend.
But how did you meet her though? Were you like, sitting next to her at the buffet, and you're...
I went and introduced myself to her.
You did?
Yeah.
Wow!
And do, do you know, can we say her name?
Yasmin.
Yasmin?
And I'm now blanking on her last name.
But that's incredible, and, so they invited a bunch of similar folks who have similar visions from a similar country?
So, it was mostly Iranian-Americans, uh, women and men, uh, I met a lot of really amazing women, I met the current, uh, mayor of West Hollywood, who's running for Congress, her name is Seppi Shine, I'm gonna be supporting her. I met a, um, DA of Arlington, Virginia, who's like, a badass, can I say that on the show?
Yeah, you can say that.
So, I, I met, and so not everybody was elected, but philanthropists and people, and this is what was cool, there weren't any, I mean, other than the NASA person, like, there weren't really any, and the president, and Dr. Biden and Kamala Harris, but there weren't famous people there.
Yeah.
It was...
People trying.
Everyday people, and that's what Dr. Biden said that was so meaningful, was like, you know, you're all here, because you're boots on the ground, you're doing the work, and, and then the president, like, oh, almost made everybody cry, he like, took a moment, and he like, took a breath, and he's like, I can just feel the energy and the love in this room, and it was just so heartfelt, so, that's what was meaningful about that trip.
And why was it this week, past weekend?
So, uh, it was on Monday.
Neil, you're fired! Folks, we'll see Neil in six months.
She got the gig.
We got a new host.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna town take up your job.
City council member Neil Perilboard.
Yeah.
Okay, please, continue, this is awesome.
Monday was, it was Persian New Year, Persian New Year is the first day of spring, falls on the vernal equinox, and it was at, uh, let's see, our time, two thirty-five AM on Monday, so the celebration, the reception was on Persian New Year. So, that's what, that's what the invitation was for, is to celebrate the New Year.
Earlier, I told you that I always felt historically in America, there's always a animosity towards like, Middle East politics, Middle East aggression, and it's so awesome to see the administration embracing people of dissent that are really trying to make America better.
That was the other thing that was acknowledged, is that we're working towards freedom of people in Iran, but we're making differences in our communities.
Absolutely.
Like, I met a city council member, like I said, from West Hollywood, from Atlanta City, like, it's people who are working for, this is our home, Santa Cruz is my home.
Yeah.
So, did you come home with more strength, are you, and, did you come...
I'm on fire!
You're on fire right now?
Yeah.
I bet you are, because it's so awesome to have, like, such, the highest level of our government embrace your intentions.
Yeah, which sets the tone, I mean, I think if you think, if you compare it to the previous administration, right? That sets the tone of interactions of our fellow Americans, right? And to have it at the highest level sets the standard that we all should aspire at the local level to also raise to.
And, and I think to acknowledge and invite that dialogue and partnership with like, council members.
Yeah.
Right, like, we, we do get things done, you know, you asked the question, top five things, I want to bring it back to, I want to bring it back to Martine, and, and the biggest accomplishment that she's worked on since she's been on council, and the Children's Fund.
We're gonna talk about that.
Talk about it, sorry, now.
I'll give you a minute, I'll give you a minute. So, when you were there, did you have to, did you stand up and have to speak about who you were, what you found?
Oh, no, no, no. It was more like a press conference.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, yeah, I had no idea what to expect, I took pictures with Barack Obama's painting, that was one of the highlights as well, I did sneak a cocktail napkin into my purse, that's a highlight, but it was more of a press conference, so it was so...
Did you get in a swag bag?
Stole a silver fork, you're like...
Swag bag, you know swag bag, stuff, goodies?
We did get a, an actual hard copy invitation, and I think I'll frame that, it was kinda fun.
I'm very proud of you for doing that.
Me too.
And, and honestly, it's because, um, we, we need more, uh, uh, love.
Yeah, we do.
You know, and we do, and I feel like that's such an olive branch from our federal government, the highest level, to, people are people, and everyone's trying to make a change.
That's right.
As you are, this is not a get-rich scheme, you're just trying to make our town better, I don't care who you are, if you're trying, we need to embrace it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's great, so congratulations.
And we all can, every single one of us can.
Yes, yeah, well done.
Well?
You ready? Okay, okay. Am I gonna zoom in now?
Yeah.
You gotta zoom in to her, you zoomed in to me.
Okay, what are you doing, what are you, what are we doing?
Oh, are, with the children, for, on the Children's Fund, or?
Yeah, Children's Fund.
An accomplishment of this last few months.
Okay.
That was years in the making.
Talk about the Children's Fund, I know, not, TC and I know nothing about.
Okay, well, really? Okay.
And it has children, there were children in it, so we're already, we're automatically going, yeah.
Okay, good, 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 good. So, um, let's think, where to start? So, when I originally got on the council, it was the same year that the people of California voted to legalize cannabis, and so, what hap, I'm gonna give you the story behind it.
This is good, you've got cannabis and children.
Yeah, yeah, and I didn't create the, I didn't, I didn't create the idea, but I was, there you go, a pot for tots, they used to say, a pot for tots. That was where I was at, as Children's Thing, and they were like, yeah, cannabis, pot for tots, but, but, yeah, anyways, it's not, this is our...
I gotta get that bumper sticker, I gotta get that bumper sticker, man.
No, 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 this is from a different...
Be right here at the border.
Start a new goal.
We wanted revenue, we just wanted revenue, we wanted the revenue.
Pretty lot of t-shirts here tomorrow morning.
Jesus, no.
Hashtag.
No, 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 no. Our system is Santa Cruz Children's Fund.
Okay, sorry.
Anyways, no, 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 and so, long story short, we ended up setting aside a portion of the revenue, because we knew it would grow.
Yeah.
And you don't get a lot of new revenue sources in city government or county government in the state of California, that, so it was an opportunity uniquely to set aside some funding for kids, which was the original intent of the voters of California, to have this go back to the community, to be reinvested in a way that was gonna be meaningful. Um, so, long story short, that policy has been in place for, uh, several years now, and what I know is that Shebra and I won't be on the council forever, and other people will come on, and when you have a council policy, that it can change. And to really codify a value in a, in an initiative, it means, it needs to go to the voters, to not be modified. And so, in June of, um, gosh, was that last year? No, the year before.
Twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty one, thank you. Uh, the voters voted overwhelmingly at eighty five, eighty seven percent. Landslide. To support making this a permanent funding source for kids. And we increased it from twelve and a half percent to now twenty percent.
Wow.
And that percentage is in perpetuity, which means forever unless the voters decide to overturn it, will always go to kids. So as.
Kids programs?
It will go to vulnerable youth. It'll go to prevention. It'll go to early child development. And it will be comprised of. And this is one of the recent things that we had establishment of an advisory body, which was in the language of the ballot. To establish a group of members of the community who know boots on the ground, the needs of kids. We have first five, we have. City schools, United Way, part, I mean, how are we leveraging what they need and what our families and kids need and helping support that? I mean, I have a vision and I know Sheppard shares this vision that every kid will have an opportunity to enjoy our Parks and Rec program and money shouldn't be a cost. And families should have an opportunity. You don't have to be so poor that you have to get childcare that you can actually have an opportunity to. Get childcare. And if we have unrestricted dollars to help offset that, like what a beautiful way to invest in our community. And that invests in the next generation and it helps with the affordability because it's not only about what you pay for housing, it's also what the balance is.
Have you seen this?
Sorry, I get excited. When you ask me, I am going. It's like I can't stop.
Have you seen this work in other communities?
This is the first in the nation. So I was just gonna make sure that you said that. This is the first in the nation.
Trailblazer.
Well, she's a trailblazer. No grass goes under her feet.
Do you hear that? It's a first in the nation?
It's the first in the nation. Yeah. To use this particular revenue stream to be set aside for this purpose and to have the voters vote on it.
You know, I always say that in our community right now, the um, I I I own a kid business. And unfortunately, the kids in our community have been let free. Because moms and dads work to afford to live here.
That's right.
So the kids.
Not afraid.
Ten, ten to thirteen years old.
Yeah.
The gutter is their input and their influence. And we need better influence than the gutter.
Honestly, I'd say back in like the fifties, it was a concerted effort from our federal. Government at the time to not acknowledge that a woman are gonna be in the workforce after World War Two. So. We blew it and other nations didn't. And so you see in Canada and other places, they acknowledge that. And so we built it on. A foundation that the women's places in the home, they're gonna take care of the kids. And the reality is, not only can you not do that, like literally, it's very, very difficult to do that. To be able to live in these communities, but foundationally, we haven't built the infrastructure to support.
We need to.
And we need.
Quick segue to that. Yesterday I I was in Silicon Valley at eight thirty in the morning, driving down the highway. And my wife said, hey, look at all the cars. Look who's driving. It was all women. It was crazy. Like I was shocked. I've never even thought about looking. At like the two eighty corridor at nine o'clock or eight thirty in the morning.
Yeah.
Of who actually is driving cars. You would think it would all be like the dudes all going to work. No.
Yeah.
It was eighty percent women yesterday on the highway. I was shocked and I've never even thought about that in life. Who's, who's watching? Who's like that?
It's really hard.
We can't say that anymore about who's paying attention to the children.
Well, it's.
Because we've given that relegation to somebody else.
And it's hard to even find those people to be honest. You can't even get it. Back to the library project, that's why we put in and and I'm really proud about that too, is we we built into that project a childcare. So if we're gonna have all these people down there, all these people working, they're gonna have to drive across town for childcare? Like that's crazy. So if you have childcare there, then it also reduces their carbon footprint and supports their children, children in the development.
Your program is 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 nudging along nicely?
Yeah.
Well, I can't be an asshole for saying. That wants to take away women's rights.
Yeah.
Take away uh the right to choose, but at the same time does not wanna uh support childcare or uh health.
Yeah.
And it's not, there's not one or the other.
No.
You know, and so I love the fact that somebody cares. Of who is gonna be taking care of these children.
Yeah.
And so.
That's why we gotta also get more women in office because you know, when you have more women in office, they bring that perspective.
I wish my mom ran crawl.
I wish my mom ran crawl. Same with me.
Yeah, no, I I totally agree. Cause my mom is such a badass. She would have just like shaken them.
Exactly.
And uh, so I I congratulations to that because we need more.
Yeah.
Of that effort because uh, unfortunately, our 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 country is run by these eighty year old dudes.
That's right.
Which would not be here.
They can join the clerics in Iran.
That's right.
Put them all on.
My son got married a couple of years ago. He's still, you know, my son and his wife, they've been married two years and I. I I of course, I like to have a grandkid like, but I I wouldn't blame him not to have kids. Bringing kids up in today's world because thinking back down the road, what are you gonna do? They both work now. They both work now to live here. But to both work here now and live here and have a kid.
It's hard.
You've 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 you've, what you've gotta give up something or. I don't know. It's it's a difficult decision for for a young couple trying, you know, becoming a family.
Yeah.
Maybe easier for not to have a family. I don't know.
It's a tough question.
I, we also, I think, can remember that we have a community.
Right.
Like, ask for help from your neighbors, ask for help from, it's hard to do because your neighbors are also working, but I mean, I'm just thinking like. You know, I was gone, my husband was gone, it's pouring rain. My son got a ride home with our neighbors.
Right.
You know, just like we forget, I think we often forget that I'm not alone, you're not alone. We have a community. So. Let's just, let's put it out there and see who in the community, how we can help each other. That's lost a lot.
And I mean, and back to the Children's Fund, if they if they had just a little bit of extra help to make the childcare not so expensive.
Yeah.
That helps with their rent, that helps with their mortgage or it helps with their, like, I mean, so it's all connected into the holistic picture of.
Let me just, I have a friend that she works full time only for benefits.
Of course.
It's a nega- it's a negative, it's a negative deal.
Right.
Like she should be uh.
Yeah.
Being involved as a family member, uh, encouraging development.
Absolutely.
But she's not there only for health.
That's a whole nother thing.
Earlier we were talking about how um, some other communities have a concert venue and how we don't have.
Yeah, I I went saw Bonnie Raitt last night.
This is our currently, that's currently that's our number one venue besides the Catalyst.
Yeah.
Isn't a venue in our site?
Midtown, the midtown thing the city did was suc- was successful. Not because of me, because it was, it was, it was in a great spot, it was right in midtown town.
First off, we have bands in a parking lot. That's not a concert venue.
No, it's definitely not a venue.
But we don't really have that.
You're right, no we don't.
Community of our size.
I think we have, I mean, we, you know, I think the civic would probably be the default, but we had like the little ones, Palookaville and those. I mean, you can support in Calis, you support the little ones and then. But like as we start to re-envision our downtown and we're thinking about, you know, not the downtown for the next five years, but the downtown for the next like fifty years. Like what does that look like in terms of opportunity and live music and out and outside? And I mean, music brings people together. Just it's like it.
And it brings revenue.
It brings revenue. People go out to eat and then they come, just like the Warriors. And I mean, I think there is, people wanna be active and in doing and engaging.
I feel like a town of our size, we are missing that. And I mean, on the council, I know it's a long term vision, but I feel like we.
And it's pretty.
Really could uh, embolden our town and bring attention to our town. On top of everything else with that.
Yeah.
But that midtown thing was a community thing. People from the community came out in droves and came down to the parking lot. That we cleaned, we had to clean for six hours beforehand to get rid of shit out of there.
It was hot and it was hot on those days.
But you know, we're 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 small fries. But Capitola, last month?
Yeah, that was big.
That was a gigantic success.
Yeah.
Um, based on not really anyone trying to do stuff like that.
People are hungry for it. Yeah, I agree.
I think Santa Cruz historically has been a musical town. We have incredible talent here. We know that.
Yeah, we do.
And we don't embrace it as a community.
Yeah.
And we should. We can't just depend on the town.
When I, when I started doing the downtown thing, right, Matthew said, hey, do the music, would you do the music for the downtown?
Which brought me downtown.
The city economic development, what it's called, right? Said you need to do a, here's the spots you can have. Here's what, here's the spots that we want you to do the 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 shows in. Middle, it was middle winter. Pissing rain and freezing ass cold. One was next to that parking, next to the metro station.
Oh, uh-huh.
Outside, next to the metro station.
Not gonna work.
Are you out of your mind? And the other one was across the street next to the guitar, the 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 music shop, the parking lot there.
What, like um?
Pocket like to, what's that?
Like towards Laurel or?
What's the music store called down there? That mu- that?
It used to be a music store, now it's a teen.
Still there. Next to Catalyst. You got the Catalyst, you got the music store. There's a little part, a little parking lot right there.
Oh, I know where you're talking about.
You're gonna do that, you could do a show there. I'm like, are you out of your mind? No. We're gonna do, I I found a roof. I found a roof, which is Kono.
Yeah, yeah.
I went to Betty Burger's to talk to Laurie. She was, oh, yeah, let's do it here. Then they they shot me down, but but throwing it there. That I found Kono because there was a roof.
Yeah.
Do I build a roof?
You can't.
Can we build a roof in Santa?
Well, I think like part of my overall is talking about.
If the community does it, let the community do it. And let the community do it. Have the community do it and then it'll be successful.
Yeah, well, part of.
I tell you, the other thing I did with Capitola, that concert with Capitola, TC.
That was great.
I've never been so many meetings in all my life. I was, I had an idea, like, and I, my idea was to bring the Expendables down, raise some money for the people who are no longer employed in Capitola. The cooks, the waitresses, all the people that got, not the owners, but the rest of the owners.
Right.
My idea was to get the money to the employees who don't.
Workers.
Meeting number one.
Yeah, I wanna inject. Capitola has a bandstand.
Exactly.
Santa Cruz does not have.
They can have one.
A bandstand.
Okay, next project, Martine. Well, there's also the vision, the re- the whole vision of the downtown too. It's like the library moves, then. The farmer's market will move and we want a permanent space for the farmer's market. Could also be like a space that could be for events and other opportunities. So I think it's all part of this bigger vision that actually happening right now.
I think that's what brought the community together, especially midtown. It wasn't, it wasn't me or the better music. The people came and they had their dog, they ate food, they talked. It was a good, it was, it was a community base.
And we're activating, we're working on activating the rep.
What's that?
Let us know how we can keep supporting you. A hundred percent.
Are you ready for Rap Boy's question?
I'm gonna hand this one over to Sheppard now.
Did he write something?
No, no, I, you know, he asked you a question. Well, I mean, we've we've talked about homeless. We all know, we beat, we beat this horse down. There's no money. It's, that's the biggest problem, right?
It goes beyond money.
So it's, I mean, there's like, it's a, it's a complicated question.
Yeah, it's very complicated.
We happen to live a beautiful, sunny, historically, community. That uh, has resources and if I was homeless, I'd probably be here too, just saying. I mean, it's a beautiful spot. Homeless here have passports, you know, it's like it's an amazing place. Uh, Rap Boy's thing was drugs, right?
Yep.
And the convictions for jail thing going on here. Is there ever, do you see, and I don't, I'm not blaming you on this.
That's a cyroscope. He.
That's like, it's a tough question. It's also a same California thing. It's not just a proudly scary thing.
We can talk about it.
Oh, yeah, but it's, that's a question that comes up all the time. As a business owner, it comes up to me too. Is there ever gonna be a change for someone to commit a. Bellany and be out on the street to do it again two days later? Is that, is, do you see a change ever?
That that is a bigger systemic uh, change that's needed that you're bringing up. But I think that we can, we can put in place measures and policies that would. Lessen that. Um, and we've, we're, we're trying, we're trying. I mean, in the last couple of years, the city of Santa Cruz has passed some policies. To try to address exactly what you're talking about is, is we're talking about the behaviors. We're talking about the behaviors that if you did it. It's illegal and it's not okay. If you did it, it's legal, it's not okay. So whether a person is housed or unhoused, if their. Behavior is illegal, the city will will be holding them accountable. Now, how far that goes? That's the bigger systems change that's needed at, I mean, state, federal levels. And and I, and I've talked about this before, but right, there's a whole spectrum of homelessness and. What we see as the visible homelessness on the streets is a lot of unmet mental health and substitutions. I'm just gonna keep saying that. Because there are things we can be doing differently. Right now, today.
You you were just at the White House, Dr. Biden, right? Just that he was in the neck of the woods. And when Dr. Biden came here to Capitola, I'm thinking. The old man showed up here.
Yes, he did.
Right? Yeah, we have a maybe, we have a little flood problem going on here, but but, Doc, but the, excuse me, Mr. Biden. We have a bigger problem downtown here.
Yeah.
Way bigger than a couple of.
I did corner him. I cornered him and I said, what are you doing?
There are a couple of buildings down here that are fucked up, that, right, that need, that, I don't know, be taken care of by FEMA. I'll get, I'll be, I mean. Let us show you a big problem and we. We'll take her downtown and we'll sh- show the big problem that we have.
What are you talking about? Well, you know, I did the point in time count last month.
You did what?
You know what that is? So every year we go out and we do a count of people who are unhoused.
Okay.
Okay, and then we use that data for all kinds of things.
Daywide, right?
Yeah, nationwide. Yeah, well, uh, yeah, every other year and but we've done it anyway.
Yeah.
Anyway, so um, and my area was downtown. And I have never seen it like this.
Bad?
Yeah. I mean, I don't know, maybe it's, it's the rain, it's like, it's just.
Right.
I think.
Also, when you think about snow, they they leave.
Right.
And when you, when it, when, and the foothills were covered in snow. I think this year is an anomaly with that. But Santa Cruz is kind of paradise and they. I know for a fact, you can get, you can come here and survive if you're homeless.
You mean not die in the weather?
Exactly. And you can get help if you need it. If you don't, that's okay. But we live, it's kinda like Santa Barbara and San Diego. It's not, California is a great.
Along the coast.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, the whole criminal justice conversation is very, I mean, it's complicated. In terms of the incarceration and the racial type, I mean, there's a whole complicated component of that. And then the over incarceration and the prison industrial complex.
City jails are fucked.
And then they, they gave it to them. They gave it to them. They closed down the middle of the, that's full prison facility. Anyways, it's a very complicated question. And it's interconnected. Our s- our city doesn't control the courts. We don't control the jail. We can only do our part. So the filing, the no filing, the revolving door.
The bigger question is why is a nation as rich as us have this problem when other countries don't?
What's that?
Does Iran have this problem?
Iran?
No.
No.
Mexico have either.
We knew that we would lose, we're losing the middle class. So what do you get? I mean, you don't get people who can make it.
Like Rio de Janeiro, which is like.
Yeah.
You're, it's, it's, it's got, you're upper class and low class. You've got nothing in between.
That's right. That's what we've seen is coming. That's what we've, yeah.
For sure. We also have more guns than anybody on the planet.
Boston, America.
We're gonna finish the show so they can go home.
No.
But we ought to find out, what, what, a year, we stand here a year from now, what do you think, what? What do you think we're gonna be? A year from now, one year from now, what do you think we're gonna be? What improvements do you think we can make? Something that you think, God, it's just not gonna happen.
Hmm, it's not gonna happen?
Yeah, I mean, it's like homelessness is a, there's, do you think there's gonna be any differences to homelessness and in next year this time?
I think we will have made some big changes. Um, I think we will. We will continue to chip away at the homelessness. We're, we're not gonna solve it. I've never promised that I'm gonna solve homelessness because it's not for me to solve, it's for all of us.
Right.
But what I was gonna say is I think that we will make some real good headway on activating our midtown, downtown sort of business corridors. And that'll bring life, that'll bring the community, bring old people, my teenage sons, you know, I think that's something that I. Very clearly see in a year from now, not just the housing that's gonna go up, which is gonna help all that, but we're gonna re-envision what that's gonna look like.
And your kids program's gonna take off?
Of course. Yes. I know, I was just tripping out. I'm like thinking like a year now, it's like we've had COVID, we've had the C D U, we've had like these floods. Like it's really intense to think about how to predict the unpredictable. Other than that, you just do your best to come together when times get tough.
Can I say one thing?
Of course you can.
I wanna congratulate you too, because you're very uh, vulnerable to putting yourself out there to make a change. And it takes guts. Yeah, and 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 to all the naysayers and complainers and keyboard jockeys. Try doing that on yourself, you know, cause uh, our community is better because of your passion to make it better. And it takes a, a village. And I don't wanna say that as like the cliche thing, but it really does. And if you wanna complain, don't complain. Go out and make a change. You know, and I think that's the most important part of Santa Cruz. of Santa Cruz. Historically, we were a tight-knit community that loved the surf and ocean and the community and the, the being here. It's gotten bad, but you two.
I was sitting with Pono with, with her a few months ago back and I go, hey, Midtown, is it happening? She goes, book the damn bands, Neil. Okay, so when, and everyone, as soon as I, as soon as I put it on Facebook, I got bombarded by like a hundred bands, booked them all. And of course, we didn't have, if we didn't have a per, I'm like, hey, where's my per, where's the, are you okay yet? No, we haven't okay yet. I'm like, oh. We got it done, we got it done.
Like, hey Neil, have you let the cops know the Expendables are playing on SoCal?
My dear friend, she's a, my dear friend, she's a uh, professor at San Jose State, teaches chemistry. And she loves all the live music. And she wrote to me, she wrote me a book. She's always such a sweetheart. Neil, dear Neil, I'm so sorry that I had to leave the Expendables concert last night cuz I was having fabulous time dancing with my friends, but I just got fucked up. Thought I had to go home. I got so stoned. I have no smoke pot, I don't smoke it, I was careful, but I went home and I was chmammered. But she wrote this big email. It was pretty funny.
Um, Neil, before we go, can we do one more uh?
Can I say something?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I wanna, I wanna thank you guys for doing this show. This is, you know, this gives, connects us to people that we wouldn't normally connect with. And so you do this for us, you do this for other people. So thank you for hiding us. Thank you for doing the show and it is a week.
Hang on a second, one second. Craig, Craig in the uh, foot, chop, point house. Soon, soon as you guys walked out, he's walked out and goes, fuck, those two hot chicks. Craig, this is, this is, this is Shebra Calentari Johnson.
Well done.
And this is Martine Watkins. That's who, that's who's here tonight. Santa Cruz City Council members.
I just wanna thank you two for trying to make our town better. And you've done this because of your passion for this town. And we cannot survive without people like you. So just.
Same to you.
Keep fighting the good fight because it takes a gigantic village. Do not wanna say that again, but it really does. Um, Santa Cruz is such a special place. I love being here and it takes all of us to keep it that way.
And I know that you mentioned the people that are like, you know, the naysayers, there's so many rad, amazing, good people in Santa Cruz. They make it roll and run and it's rad.
And I hope you never get sad of what you're trying to do because there's people who always wanna inject their negative opinions. The people who try, in my opinion, are winners. So don't, if, if we try, we win. And you two are tryers. And I, we need more of them. So if you're watching the show.
Stick your hat in the ring.
Instead of talking crap, try to make it better. You know, and, and I know it's, it's a sacrifice for you two to do this. You have families, you have kids, you have stuff going on in your lives. You're doing this to make our town better. Period. That's the only reason. So stop, people. Stop talking shit. Shit and just try to be better. Period. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have lots of live music coming out. We have lots of live music coming out. I don't know who they are, forgot about them. We have a lot of great guests coming on the show. Rap Boy's coming on the show. We have uh, uh, state senator, John Led's coming back.
And Jimmy Pasco.
And Jimmy's coming back April second. Where's the red wine?
By the way, ladies, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Shebra Calentari Johnson.
Uh, we will see you next time on the Alpha Flap Radio Show. Neil, thanks for always being you. And uh, folks, good night. And uh, as I always say, if you wanna complain, don't complain, just try to make it better. Thank you so much and good night.